Do you want to ask of anybody else? There's one other person, I don't know if she... Angie, did you want to talk at all?
Oh, no, I just wanted to see if there was an update.
It's what?
I just wanted to see if there was an update.
Okay. Anybody else have green paper to fill up? Okay, thank you.
The students' interest.
Hmm?
We have the best students, where they speak. What's that? Dr. National. That was just an aspirant. Tristan knows that we're going to have people. Can I forget? I'll check with her to be sure. I mean, I spoke to someone for the presentation.
Are we ready to go?
Yes.
Everything all hooked up?
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can stack it if you need to.
No, I'm just making sure we didn't have to start it.
That you're talking about or something.
No.
All right, I will call the first public hearing to order. This public hearing is on the middle school, high school fire alarm replacement. There's only one item on the agenda, and that's for the public to speak on the middle school, high school fire alarm replacement information. Do you have anything to add?
No, this is for, just a reminder, when we did the high school HVAC replacement in the band addition, we fell into that unique window where when it was drawn out, the code wasn't in place, but by the time we were done, it was, that when you do any additions, you have to update your fire alarm system. So we received a variance from the state to give us X many years to do that. So we've been setting aside money in the PEPAL and SAVE fund to build up for that. And that was going to be ideally over the next year that we would work on that, next summer, start with that. So this is the beginning of that process. And that's what this initial public hearing is about, is any question. They have the notice of the hearing in there and the bid specs on that, and then the timeline of what will be the next two items to occur.
So anybody from the public would like to speak on that public hearing? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Come on, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carried. I will now call to order the second public hearing, and that is on the instructional support levy.
Calendar.
Calendar.
I mean, I'm sorry. Let me go back, wrong, clicked the wrong thing. All right, I'll call the public hearing on the school calendar change.
The change is on Wednesday, January three. When you read the original calendar, that was listed as a normal day of school, not an early out day. In developing our PD schedule, we have planned PDs when coming in that day. And thankfully, we have two good principals who caught that. I think the intent was to have PD, it just wasn't on the calendar, and they said, hey, we have people, we have someone come in to do some literacy work on that day, and the calendar says we're not getting out. So that's the change, would be on Wednesday, January third, we would get out early like we do nearly every other Wednesday.
Anybody from the public want to speak on the calendar change? All right. Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the second public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. And... Make sure that we can... Okay, it is five thirty-three, so we can call the official board meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Next item, our five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law in your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving on to our consent agenda items. Kendra has handed out a couple of more sheets.
So this packet of information is the final numbers from FY twenty-three. The three state reports that I filed were due last Friday on the fifteenth and submitted. So I included, state reports don't print off very good. So this first sheet kind of gives an overview of the detail of the other ones. The transportation report is submitted, was submitted for FY twenty-three. The number of students transported were two hundred and eighty-nine total. Total miles driven were a hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight. Our net operating costs are four hundred and sixty-six thousand, which actually is, it's a net operating cost. It's actually our actual costs, and then there's some adjustment for special ed miles and things like that. So it kind of looks like it was down from the year before. Our actual fuel and salary and benefits costs were increased from the year before, but we had some adjustments on the special ed side of things. So it looks a little, the net costs are a little lower. So our average cost per mile traveled is four eighty-eight. And then the average cost per pupil is one thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The next part is about the special ed supplement, and that is submitted. It has to do with the students that we serve, the, our open enrolled in and out kits that we bill for or get billed for, for special ed services, and then our revenue that we receive and our expenditures. So our total special ed revenue is one point three million. Our total expenditures are one point four million, so that gives us a deficit of a hundred and sixteen thousand. And later in the, in the meeting here, you guys will approve that we can get the supplemental, supplemental state aid, that amount, the spending authority back for that amount. Couple totals of our students, tuitioned out students are, there are students that live in our district, but open enroll out or are served at a different district. And we have ten of those students. Our resident students that live here and come to school here are eighty. And then non-resident students that tuition in, those would be our open enrolled in kids that we serve, that have special ed needs, and there's nine of those. And then the last section is about the certified annual report or the CAR. Just the total general fund revenues are nine point five million, and our total general fund expenditures are nine point six million. So the next couple pages are a little more detailed about the same information that I just got you, gave you. The first one is the transportation report. It's a little bit confusing to look at, but you can see the number of route miles and non-route miles that were driven, and our average cost per pupil and per mile. The next page is kind of a summary on the special ed, special ed report. It's a little hard to read, but the top section is all of the revenue that we get in, the various Medicaid that we receive, and some other funding that we get. And then the bottom section is on a breakout of the expenditures that we have. And then if you flip over on the back, it shows the net revenues over or under expenditures, and it's a deficit. So we were over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which is very common. Our special ed deficit is pretty good compared to some districts. And it usually stays pretty steady. The next page is very hard to read, I apologize, it's small. There isn't really a good way to print that out. It's one of the reports from the certified annual report. The first, in the columns across, it gives each fund that we have. So general fund, student activity fund, management, SAVE and PEPAL, and then the nutrition fund and debt service. And then along the side, it shows, the top section is all of our revenue. So it's if we have property tax, or state aid, or where the, where the funding is coming from. So it shows on line twenty that total revenues in general fund were nine point five million. If you, if you go way to the right column, that shows a total of all funds. So there was total revenue of twelve million dollars. And then the next section shows all of our expenses. Again, general fund is probably the one that is most important that we always talk about. Those are in the first column there. And line, line thirty-seven shows our total expenditures. And general fund is nine point six million. Our total expenditures overall is, are, overall are twelve million. So there are many, many other reports. If you guys have questions or want any information about anything that went on financially during the year, please feel free to ask, because there's a lot of information that we, it's just too much to go through at a four-day meeting. The next page, we updated the UAB report with the final numbers from FY twenty-three. The one we always wait for is special ed deficit, and then our final expenditures, and then miscellaneous income, which miscellaneous income is basically everything that's not state aid or local property tax. The reason ours is a little higher this year, in the last couple of years, is the federal SIR funds that we have in there. So if you look on, kind of in the middle of the page where it says estimated FY twenty-three, those are final numbers there. So if you look down towards the bottom, the unspent authorized budget, one of the gray, gray lines, that ended up at four million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand. And you can see, last year it was four million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand. So we're actually down eight thousand, sixty dollars. So that means we, we spent all of the authority that we got this year, and a little bit of the carryover that we have built up. Do you want to talk about the future ones?
So this came to us, one of the models we're using initially from IASB. And so if you look, the projections there, now, they told us as well, this is based on enrollment patterns from the last few years with, and we'll talk about this in a later agenda item with our guest for enrollment this year, because we don't have that done. But significant losses in enrollment each year, and they said they took that as worst-case scenario. We would know that better. And then it also factors in, you know, the loss in some of our federal funds that we've been having the last few years, what we want to call COVID money, right? The SIR funds, switching that over, and then assuming no changes in staff or salaries. And then, do you remember Kendra, did one or two percent increase aid per year? Does it say the percentage on here? I know it was a lower percent.
I think we went with two percent.
Two percent, okay. So roughly that in those, and then so just looking at that big picture, you can kind of see, going back to what Kendra was pointing out there, the unspent authorized budget. So yes, we're down about the six, eight thousand bucks this year. But we've also know that, we knew coming into this year that would be close. We've had those discussions last year, Mr. Craig and the board has, and talked about how we need to spend some of our authority down. And, but just be aware of that, that that's coming, those conversations, that without doing anything, you can kind of see how that percentage of the unspent authorized budget, you see how that keeps getting lower, because we're eating more into that. And then I'll say, in, right now with no other things, fiscal year twenty-eight would be where that comes. So not saying anything to scare, but just a reality, and obviously, those are things that we've talked about. There's other factors that will play into that of what our actual enrollment will be over the year, and any staffing changes that do happen between now and then, or staffing changes as well.
The last two pages are the certified budget comparison. So we do the certified budget in the spring and set the expenditures that we're going to have in, when we set that, it lumps all of the funds together. What we're going to send, spend all across all of the funds for in instruction and support services and non-instructional, and then facilities acquisitions and construction. So the numbers under published budget, that's what we budgeted in our certified budget. And then the total expenditures is the total used. So as you can see, we weren't over budget in anything that, that ends up in our audit if we are, and we shouldn't have that this year. The last one is just the final FY twenty-three numbers for our categoricals. This is the same spreadsheet that I do every month, but it's just the final for the year. So if you look at the FY twenty-three, as of six thirty balance, it's the third one from the right, you can see we had a carryover in four of our funds, ELL, which we've added pretty much one and a half teachers this year for that. And then TSS, there's a very small carryover. Early literacy initiative, and then professional development. And so we're working, ideally, you would spend all the categorical that you receive in the same year. So. Any questions? That was fast, a lot of information.
Anybody have questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to visitors, public forum. We have two people that would like to speak tonight. Please limit your speech to three minutes, and I will take them in the order that they were turned in. First is Travis Tenapel, and the subject about which to speak is the bus stop. Go ahead, Travis.
Well, yeah, first off, I'd like to say thanks for the administration. We found out at the end of June that our state registered daycare where the bus previously stopped was going to be closing, which was Regina Myers daycare. So it was a fairly roller coaster ride from figuring out what our kids were going to do after school, because it was tough to get in to another daycare, as we know, it's kind of a shortage right now. So when that time hit me, I reached out to my school board representative. He kind of led me in the proper direction of which route I needed to navigate in discussions with Stan, which then became discussions with Amos. And when I was going through, more or less, I was, I was trying to figure out who would all be utilizing it as well. So we had fifteen total kids that would be using it from preschool to sixth grade. And seventy-five percent of those are at the elementary school, which when it was drawn up is just over a mile from where we are at. And I just kind of want to leave it as a, as a thank you, and just to give you some positive feedback on, on my experience. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Emily Zilstra, and she would like to talk about this bus stop location.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Emma Zilstra. I live in Sibley and currently have two daughters that are in middle school here. I also want to first start off by thanking you all for being here. I know this day and age, how extremely hard it is to get people to volunteer around boards. So thank you for what you do. I'm here as a concerned community member about the drop of the bus stop located at Trinity Lutheran Church. This bus stop was taken away without prior notification to the public and families that use this stop until we dropped off school supplies two days prior to school starting. The stop at Trinity Lutheran has been a bus stop in Sibley for years, transporting many kids to and from school. In fact, it has been the only bus stop location north of Fifth Street, the only bus stop on that side of town. In the local newspaper, there was recently an article titled, there's a lot of Ts, "Tackling Tricky Transportation." The article was written regarding the last school board meeting, with community members present, pleading for the stop to remain. The board decided that it would be worth discussing with the transportation director after getting some input on this year's usage. It's time to evaluate the usage. As one, the school should have a grasp on numbers that they're picking up, numbers of kids that they're picking up and dropping off. And two, the weather is soon going to be changing, and these kids that are riding their bikes are no longer going to be able to do that. On a positive note, I'm happy to report that we have new kiddos in our neighborhood, new neighbors down the street with kids, kids that are now old enough to be able to go to school, new grandparents taking care of grandkids, and even a new daycare, which is beyond needed in Sibley, as Travis stated. I can't imagine buying a new home, new home in a neighborhood, having younger kids, and being under the impression that they would be able to ride the bus to school, and then to find out two days before school starting that they would not be able to do that. There was a quote in the newspaper article which stated, "We can't have a stop at every house in town." We are asking for a community, community bus stop location to accommodate the kids north of Fifth Street, not front door house stops, which have been created at Gulfview Drive, too, in fact. For what I understand, a handful of kids at times. It appears from a person on the outside looking in and experiencing this myself, that not having input from a district board to member, and where certain people live, might be favoring the new additional front door bus stops. Life isn't fair is a conversation in my household often. My response is, try harder, practice more, be kinder, read more, pray more. This drop stop really isn't about being fair, it's about what's doing right for several kids and working families, not just a handful from a select neighborhood. It is my job as a parent to advocate for my kids. I am here as a taxpaying community member, asking you to reinstate the bus stop at Trinity Lutheran Church or somewhere in that vicinity, as it is the right thing to do. This is affecting more kids and families than you know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily. All right. Moving on to administrative reports, principals, Mr. DeZale.
Yeah, can we switch it?
Oh, sure.
Thanks for, yeah, I was at my daughter's volleyball game, so.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Hertz?
Yep. So I've put my information up there. If you want to read through it, I'll just kind of give you a brief overview. In general, just really excited about how the year has started. Staff and students have been fantastic, a ton of support, you know, kind of getting the new principal caught up to speed and the learning curve that I'm going through. As of September twenty-first, we're at the midpoint of the quarter. As we were kind of talking before the board meeting, board meeting started, things are flying by, and it is going really quickly. So we're already halfway through the first quarter. Regarding professional development, we're continuing with Katie Schroder, leading in that twelve through seven staff grade levels, helping new staff in our mentoring program. So she's been leading that, and they've had several meetings already. And I think that's a great benefit to our new staff. And as we talked about, retention for teachers, I think that's how you keep people here is by having a great mentoring program, and Katie's been doing a great job with that. As of September twentieth, our individual teacher professional development plan goals are due. And again, we've talked about this briefly, but those goals are focused around the MTSS, multiple tiered support, systems of support. And so we're focusing on that first tier, which is in classroom interventions. And we broke that into three categories. The first category being assessing students to see where they're at, see what the needs are. The second category being grouping students based on the data that you've gotten from your assessment. And then the third area is tier-one intervention strategies. And so teachers graded themselves on where they're at, and then chose an area to focus on based on their perception of where they are. And that's what they made their individual professional development plan goals based off of. And that's off to a good start. Again, those are due the twentieth, so we're getting those in. And Kent and I will be meeting with teachers to go over their goals once they're all in. We started a new program this year, Kent and I, called the Generals of the Week. And so far, we've recognized over thirty students and staff for the great things that they're doing here at SO. When we initially started, we weren't sure how many nominations we were going to have. It's all staff nominated. And we've had lots of nominations, so in addition to recognizing our Generals of the Week, which has been about five a week, we're also doing honorable mention calls, which was an idea of Kent's. So for students who are nominated but not selected, we still do make a phone call home and let them know what the nomination was for. So we're doing that with our students as well. So again, recognizing students and staff and all the positive things that they're doing. I just want to recognize Cooperative Energy has donated, I believe, somewhere around a hundred free drink certificates for our students. So we're handing those out as part of this, if they're nominated and selected. And then the Catfish Club, didn't inform me, they're going to, they're going to donate forty ten-dollar certif, or gift cards from places around town, and that would be an incentive or bonus thing we would give to staff members that are selected for Generals of the Week. So we do have some community involvement in, in supporting Generals of the Week already. And I, I have a call in to several other places, just waiting on the, the process, so. Uh, regards, regarding staff attendance, in August, ninety-eight point nine-five percent. And September, as of the fourteenth, was ninety-eight point nine-five for those months. And then the individual professional development dates, the percentages are listed there. So, you know, I'm, I'm new, to me, this seems like really high attendance, and I'm happy about that. I don't know if that's numbers that we've seen going back, but I, I think our staff is showing up and doing a great job, so. That's all I have.
Okay. Any comments, questions for Mr. Hertz? All right, thank you. Mr. DeZale?
Yeah, so again, thank you for allowing me to prioritize my family a little bit and, and get to my daughter's volleyball game, so that's why I walked in a little bit late. In terms of my report and what's going on through the preschool through sixth grade levels, like Mr. Hertz, a lot of my information echoes what Mr. Hertz shared. I had a mentor my very first year teaching, and said, hold on for the ride. He said, this year will seem like, by the end of the year, this year will seem like it will fly by. And then every year after that, will seem like it goes even faster. And I'm like, yeah, you know, I'm twenty-one, twenty-two years old, yeah, sure, whatever, Mr. Menagee, whatever you say. And it just, it amazes me how true that comment rings every single year. It's like, we're September twenty already, almost, and it's like, where did it go? And so can't reiterate enough how proud I am of the work that the staff continues to do with our MTSS process, with their commitment to continuing to meet the needs of the kids. So kind of tying in our general school information, the PD that Mr. Hertz kind of talked about. Like I said, it's a lot of echoes, but really, we have such a dedicated and committed team. We had an incident today at the middle school where everybody just kind of stepped up and said, hey, we're going to continue to do, put the, the needs of the kids and, and everybody here first, and we're going to make it work. And so just extremely proud of the staff and, and what they continue to do. So I would like to also reiterate a thanks to Katie specifically, and Lindsay also, our instructional coaches for their work with the in-house mentoring. That's a huge benefit to our That's a huge benefit to our students and to our staff to be able to do that here and to make sure that those teachers are spending time, not that the, that when we went, um, to other places and, and collaborate with other teachers, but to be able to have them in front of kids. We hired them to be in front of kids and so, to be able to have them in front of kids is a huge benefit, um, and, and, uh, really helps out our process there as well, so. Um, like Mr. Hertz said, we're gonna continue to focus on those three tier one strategies of the M- um, MTSS process, the assessment, the grouping and the interventions. And teachers did a self-assessment to kinda figure out where they thought they were at and we will continue to have those conversations to, um, best meet the needs of our teachers in addition to meeting the needs of our students, so. Um, we continue to, uh, work on implifedi- im- implementing our Amplify curriculum, um, to higher levels, um, and, and working to kind of make sure that that meets the needs of our kids as well and, and of our district. Uh, one of the things here coming up in terms of our, um, curriculum teams and, and curriculum departments, I would like to focus on is how do us, how does, how do our curriculums, um, match up and overlap with what we're being tested over in terms of FAST and ISASPs and I-ready and those, those, um, statewide assessments, some of those kinda things. So, that's work that will be, be coming out for us here in the future, so. Um, the staff attendance is listed there. Uh, we do have a couple, I have, uh, one staff member who's on maternity leave and so that affects those, uh, percentages significantly when you're talking one out of forty right off the bat and so, um, but very good nonetheless. Our staff shows up to work and when they work, they're working hard and, uh, just super proud of the work that they're continuing to do.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. DeZale? All right, thank you. Um, superintendent report, Mr. DeZale?
Um, reiterate a lot of what they said and I'm appreciative of our staff and how they're working hard and, um, stepping new into this role. Casey's new into his role this year and I've said this before, you know, Kent is our veteran in his second year. But the staff's done a really good job to be helpful, so I'm very appreciative and thankful for what we've had all around, so. Um, as of today, we don't have our certified enrollment, but it will be down. Um, instead, I said it looks like it'll be down, we know it'll be down. Um, there's a lot that'll go into that and working that through, so we, we should have an actual update on what that will be when we get to the October board meeting. But right now, just in terms of people in place, it'll probably be twenty-plus students, that'd be my guess right now. Um, significantly not just down like as in single digits, but we'll wait and see with that. Um, the professional de- um, development, those guys have did a great job on touching on that and I didn't put a lot more into it 'cause we're gonna talk about, about that a little bit more later with my superintendent goals and things like that. Um, the other thing that we have been looking into is, Mr. Craig, I know last year about this time mentioned a grant through the state of Iowa providing several things for schools to improve their facilities. Um, we didn't really move a lot farther on that, so I've been trying to move ahead with that. And it would supply us roughly the equivalent of fifty thousand dollars per building and so we're a district that would be identified as three buildings. That doesn't mean we have to spend them the same way, but we would qualify for a hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we have the needs assessment done from doing that. I have to work with the grant writer and then we can determine, um, they give us more needs on the report than there is money to spend. So, it's kinda picking out from that what we think would be best for our district, so that's something we'll be working on. I'll be talking with, um, both principals and so forth as we move forward, so. Um, we are also looking into as a part of this, um, giving at each building our secretaries a way to directly dispatch to emergency services if the need would arise. And then also tying in our fire alarm system directly to the, um, dispatch here in town. So, right now, the alarms could go off, but unless we call, no one would know, which kinda defeats the purpose of that going off if it was the middle of the night as an example, so. Um, just those are some of the things we're looking into there.
All right. Any comments, questions for Mr. DeZale? All right, thank you. Uh, moving on to board committees, policy, finance and facilities?
Facilities would, didn't meet, but those that are on that, if we could briefly talk at the end, the schedule we had mentioned tonight, we'll talk about when we're gonna meet next to go over a few things. Um, policy, I don't really have any updates from that. We had a lot of meetings to start the year, as Laurel's shaking her head, we did. And a lot of that work will be finished tonight in terms of the second reading here later on and then we'll get going on some other updates, but I'll talk more about that then. And then finance, we've just been having some discussions in terms of our enrollment, what that'll look like, projections and some of the staff handbook changes that we'll present and talk about later. Was there anything you wanted to add in terms of finance, Kyle, that we talked about?
I don't think so. Uh, those numbers that we looked at earlier with the unspent balance percentage dropping, we knew that it was, 'cause we purposely went to spend that, spend that down. Um, so, looking forward, it's just great to have numbers, looking four or five years ahead of time, so you can make some of the changes that you need to make, so.
Yeah, and to add to that, I would say, yes, last year unspent budget, you know, went up, but it was pretty close to flat or break even and I would say likewise this year. Yes, we overspent by a little bit, but pretty close to in the grand scheme of things, platter breaking even, you know, so. Those are things we anticipated.
All right, um, any late submissions on the recognition of excellence?
We did not, but along with that, and I talked to Mr. Hertz about this, um, Eva Dagel is willing to be our student representative on the school board, but I think, and they will read this, but I also think we'll back that up on the night she couldn't be here. They changed how they did some of the stuff with student government and elections. And so, I think that will help year to year with filling this role out, those that are on the senior leadership positions, 'cause they nominated two. I think we can also work with them to fill that and kinda make the process simpler for what we do here. So, yes, no one's here and I don't have any submissions, but me and Mr. Hertz have had conversations about that.
Okay. Uh, moving on to item six, um, new teacher introduction?
So, because of volleyball, Madison was not able to be here in August, but she is here this evening, so I will let Madison go from there. Go ahead, Madison.
Hi, I'm Madison Nagel. Um, I'm a third grade teacher and also the assistant volleyball and basketball coach for our girls here. Um, yeah, it's been a great start to the year and I'm excited to keep working hard in my classroom and in the court for my kiddos.
Thank you.
Madison's done a great job and a lot of, brought a lot of energy and positive vibes into not only your classroom, but the court, so we're excited to have her.
All right, moving on to curriculum presentation. Barb?
Is that me?
That is you. You go ahead, I've gotta excuse myself for a second, I'll be right back.
All right. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am Barb Williamson and I have been teaching for thirty-two years, I just love saying that, the last twenty-one here at SO. Um, I am currently the special ed curriculum leader, which is why I was asked to come tonight. I'm also the elementary reading interventionist, a part of the elementary assessment team, MTSS team, and a mentor to Matt Nagel. So, I'm first gonna start with an update on the special ed department. There are nine special ed staff, including myself, even though I'm kinda not really in the special ed realm right now. Amber and Megan are at the high school and Lisa and Matt, who is new, are at the middle school. Sarah, Amy and Lauren, who is new, are at the elementary along with Natasha, who teaches in preschool. We continue to work closely with the Northwest AEA, including, with staff, including Amanda, Laurel, Jennifer, Nancy, Kayla, Brenda and Melinda. It's a lot of staff involved with us. Our current total special ed students include twenty-one elementary students, twenty-four middle school students and seventeen high school students. The elementary and middle school staff are involved this year in what's called SDI training and that stands for specif- um, specially designed instruction. And that basically entails diagnosing individual needs, designing instruction around those needs and then delivering the instruction in the most effective manner. In September and November, we will also be involved in training on prior written notices, which discusses the procedures for giving parents prior notice when changes will be made to an IEP. For many years, special education teachers have not had systematic research-based curricula to use with special needs students. We would kinda pick and choose to work with whatever the needs of our students would be. Well, there are now several very good programs out there. And here at Sibley O'Chedin, just some of the ones that we will be using are Spire, I-Spire, Fly, really great reading and sound partners for the literacy area, Numeracy Project for the math area and Errors for Adapted Behavior, which is some behavior concerns. Using consistent programs throughout the district will be, will streamline the instruction and optimistically show increased growth. The high school special needs, needs, special needs students are involved in many things such as a coffee shop, career exploration at MCC and collecting recycling at the schools. And they currently have one student working at the lantern and one student working at Superfoods. This year, the elementary did see an increase in the number of service minutes due to some more extreme needs such as toileting issues, aggressive behaviors, assisting a visually impaired student and monitoring of other students. When I recently asked, the middle school was still short two pair of professionals?
One.
Oh, now we're one. Hey! Um, to work with our special needs students, so I know that they're still trying to work out how to cover a lot of students.
And hopefully we'll address it later tonight, so.
So, are there any questions about the special ed department? Okay, now I move into my position as the elementary interventionist. This is my third year in this position. It was started after COVID. In the last two years, I have reported on some drastic growth in some of the students that I have worked with. This year, we have changed my position slightly. Currently, I'm working with fifteen students, eleven of who, of whom just barely didn't make the benchmark in the fall testing and have never scored below the benchmark before or never received any services such as title or intervention in the past. So, our thoughts are that this is most likely from the summer slide, that's what we call it. Um, and with some intense intervention by myself and filling in some of the gaps that they were me, they were missing for a short time, that they will begin to, begin to start scoring above the benchmark again, they can hopefully leave me and then I can start working with more of the kids who, um, struggle even more. Okay, and last but not least, I wanted to give a huge shout out to the elementary assessment team, which I'm a part of and so is Lindsay Helmers, Kristen Byers and Paula Beltman. As a team of four, the assessment team assesses over two hundred and thirty-five students in a week. After the assessments are completed, we then have many tasks to complete, including entering all the data into grade level docs, determining eligibility for services such as title intervention progress monitoring, making recommendations for the MTEST, MTSS team, scheduling students into title and intervention times and creating a tutoring list. Also new this year is completing an intervention plan in a statewide program called Panorama. This is a state data collection system which is connected to our JMC and the Fast Bridge Assessment Site. Um, four people, I guess it was our, us four of the team, went to a training September fifth and by the end of that week, we had created almost eighty plans on that site. The assessment team at the middle school is the general ed teachers with the assistance of Lindsay Helmers. I know I've given you a lot of information tonight because I have several hats that I wear, but I wanted to make sure I covered all the areas. Any questions for me?
At the beginning, I do have a question, Barb, that when you were talking about, you know, the summer slide?
Mm-hmm.
Were those students, how many of those students or, or were they even in the summer program that we offer? Were they getting any of those services or were those kids who were, were already in intervention?
So, the students that I was talking about that scored just below, more than likely they might not have been in the summer programs because they haven't scored below before.
Below before.
Um, and might not have been in title or any services. Some of them may have attended.
Yeah.
Because maybe parents wanted them to or it was recommended or whatever, but more than likely, probably not.
Okay.
Yep. We do tend to, and this happens in the fall, where our title numbers tend to be a little bit higher because it, kids just aren't in the groove of reading as you are during the school year. And then it just seems like a short time and they're kinda back into the school mode and then they really don't need a lot of assistance.
You kind of addressed this, but I'm trying to give you a, a question. You said this, but in the last three, four years, and I know you haven't always been in SPED ed, but there's been some big changes, I think, in special education with your, the SDI. Would you agree and maybe just explain a little bit more so that people that aren't used to all the educational acronyms like we are?
I know.
Know what that means, because that's really been a big change in the last four years or so.
So, when a, when a student is qualifying for special education, they need their education designed specifically for them and for whatever their needs are. Um, and as you go through training through your college to get your degrees, they teach you about that kinda stuff, but there's not, back in my day anyway, anyways, there wasn't a lot of research-based stuff to pull from to really work with these kids. You were just kinda trying to figure out what they needed and, and fill in some of that. Now, there's some really good materials out there. So, the AEA has really been helping us, um, with some of these programs I listed to use. They're very intense programs that are supposed to help these special needs students grow. Um, even, what needs to happen is for our students to catch up, they need to grow even at a quicker rate than what an average student does. So, these intense programs are made to show that growth more even than what is given at the gen ed level. So, the training that we are doing about once a month with Melinda in the lower levels is looking at those programs, the Numeracy Projects. Uh, Melinda has created lots of progress monitoring and materials to go along with that. The Spire, now I can't say I know anything about Spire, 'cause I don't and I will learn more about it, but the Spire program is a very intense, it sounds like ten lesson, um, literacy program to really help students from where they're at and have them reach a level they need to. And then I think the I-Spire is more the online middle school upper level, which Matt and possibly Lisa will use at the middle school. Because we have middle schoolers still that come over to the middle school at our, at grade level and we need to fill in with whatever it is that they need. Did I answer your question?
You did.
Okay.
And I would say too, we continue to have conversation about our process for when we're testing, what's the best time for testing in our window? Do we test right away when the kids come right back so we can get them into groups? Do we wait till the end of the window so we can get some instruction under our belt before we kinda, you know, how do we accommodate for, uh, that summer slide like Barb mentioned? And so, I would echo what Barb said about, um, huge props, so to speak, to the testing team. They do such a great job of getting those kids through and then taking those results and say, "Okay, what do these really tell us?" And how can we continue to make this fit the best for us? So, they do, they do a wonderful job.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks for what you do for kids.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to item C, two-minute board policy and finance moment.
So, the, the policy trivia question here is obviously it's gonna be true, but I said, is there policy on how our actual meeting should run? And where I put this in place was with the last few years, some of the timings of when the elections occur, if you remember, school board elections used to be earlier in the fall. And now that they don't occur until the timeframe of the general election in November, that's kinda thrown off what many schools have had with their normal board policies, when they do their annual meeting and swear in and things like that. And so, ours are up to date. There is policy in what you do at your annual, your organizational meeting and your regular meeting and, and so forth and, and I'm not gonna bring those up, but those are there for a reason, so that we can follow that. So, even when a newbie like me, um, is in place, when we get to November, it kind of outlines that process. But that's changed the way we've had to do some of the things, 'cause in terms of a school and how we operate, the new year starts really in July and we're getting ready for kids to come in and the administrators are preparing and we have staff that are excited like you've heard tonight in place and kids in place and all those things that happen, but the, the election doesn't occur till November and so that doesn't always coincide with that. Um, but, and that's fine, it is what it is, but there are processes and policies on, on the, the board's role and how that works in the, the scope of our. the board's role and how that works in the, the scope of our annual meeting. So, um, if you got more questions, there are policies on that. I did put attached on here in terms of, um, finance, but I got some really cool graphics, and if you don't have options to view that on your computer right now, I did print them out, um, for the board here, but I wanted to share. Um, I thought the other half of this, I intentionally didn't put on here, is really useful, and, um, that's what I'll present next month here. But a little bit of just a refresher and maybe a school finance one oh one for people, or even a little bit higher, if you dig into this, on some of the terms that we talk about here and where that comes from. Um, we talked earlier, when Kendra was talking in her portion of the meeting about our unspent authorized budget, and if you look on the bottom here, it defines that on here, or if anyone has a question, you know, and what our spending authority, because in the grand scheme of things, that's the big thing we got to look at, is what our spending authority and our unspent authorized budget. Um, and I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but what I like on the top here is it kind of shows the difference in how funding looks for three different typical school districts in the state. And the one on the left would be one that maybe has a very low property value in relation to the number of students. The middle is supposed to be an average one, and then the one on the right would be property richest, and really, that's relative. It means the value of the property in relation to the number of students you have, because there's districts that have a lot of high property value, but they have a high number of students, so that average per student is lower. But when we're talking poor and rich in terms of, um, school districts, we're talking about the value of the property in relation to students. So, the uniform levy is that universal set-by-the-state levy, five dollars and forty cents. Well, based on the number of, the, or the value of your property in your district, you can see what percentage of the total funding in, uh, in a school budget that provides. And in a, in a district with less property value, that's going to provide less support than the average district or the, the, um, richest district. I'll keep using those terms to be consistent. The rest of that supplement to get us to that eighty-eight point four percent is what is backfilled, when you hear that term. People call about backfill through state aid, and then how we get that remaining roughly twelve percent or just under it, comes from additional levies in place, and then the, um, property tax replacement at the top there. So, the, the reality is, yes, we have some control in what our tax rate is locally, but the amount of control we have, or when I say we, I'm talking the board, is limited because there's certain things in place already. The, the portion that you have control over is, um, obviously our debt service, if we would take on more debt for like a general obligation bond or something like that, or, um, other features like that. But in terms of the actual rate, a lot of that is formula-driven, student enrollment-driven, and I think that's an important piece to say without going over every term on here, but I just thought I'd present that as kind of an FYI. Questions on that?
Where would you place us in those three?
I have an idea where I place us. What, where, where do you think we would, would fall?
I'm thinking average.
Yeah, I would say we're closer to the average, or maybe sliding to the right of the average.
To the right, yeah.
Closer to the, um, property richest. Um, a lot of that indicated by just even what our tax rate is compared to other schools. Now, sometimes you can have a, a property-rich district that has a ti, high tax rate because they've maybe built recently and have done some general obligation bonds and some debt service to pay for that. That's why that isn't always compare a hundred percent, but, um, when you look throughout the state, what that is and the value of properties in relation to the number of students you have, um, we would be in that average to the right. Sometimes it doesn't appear that way because of our neighbors that have this property that, you know, goes out onto the lake and things like that. And if you look at the total value of the property in, in some of our neighbor encounters, counties, which we compare to because it's not a long drive to get there, that totally distorts things sometimes, um, because they have a lot of high-value property compared to their number of students, so that, that isn't always comparing apples to apples, but that's our present reality. But overall, in the big picture, we would be above average.
Any other comments? Good information. Moving on to item D, ISB, IASB Convention Board Member Registrations.
So, I initially did get some hotel rooms because it's easier to cancel and, and so forth, but as soon as you can, not that you need to commit tonight, but if you are able to go, I will take care of the registration, but I need to hear back from, um, the board members if they're planning and able to go to the, um, ISB convention. Kendra and myself are obviously talking and planning and going as well, so if you guys, I mean, you can say tonight, but if you have a rough idea, but if you're, be able to go, please let me know as soon as possible so that we can kind of make those plans as those happen. So, um, you can tell me later, or if anyone has a discussion on that or a question about what that is, now's the time to do that. Any, any questions there?
It's one where you're thinking about going down.
I wouldn't, I, I'm not leaning to go down until the fifteenth. No. That's, I think what we'd have to figure out is the time and what that looks like and who's going when and everything like that. But that's what I'm looking at right now. And then we'll talk about later whether or not we want to, um, or, or not. Kyle will know about this, but appointed delegate because that happens earlier. I think that happens before the full assembly starts, if I remember right, but.
Yeah, it's the first morning, starting at about eight-thirty or nine o'clock.
On the morning of the fifteenth, if I remember right, correct.
Morning of the fifteenth, so.
But if we don't have anyone doing that, we wouldn't be there for that, so. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Great. So, please let me know as soon as you can then, um, what your plans are, and like I said, I can cancel the rooms. I did re, re, reserve enough for everyone because they said that was filling up, and I couldn't tell you which hotel. I don't remember off the top of my head, but one that was associated with the convention, I do know that.
All right, moving on to new business, consider approval of FFA trip to national convention.
And I believe we have some representatives here.
Hello, my name is Brooke Platt, and I'm currently serving as the FFA president.
I'm Marshall Skipoff, and I'm, uh, serving as your chapter treasurer.
And like Mr. DeZao said, we are just seeking approval for a national convention, so we have a slideshow put together for what we will be doing.
What is national convention? Annually held in Indianapolis, Indiana, six thousand, or sixty thousand plus members, advisors, and guests in attendance. It is October thirty-first through November fourth, ten FFA members and two chaperones, two vehicles, receiving two-star national chapter award recognition.
Um, so our purpose is learning to do, which is new ideas from other chapters, doing to learn, which will be the tours, earning to live, which will be workshops we will attend while we're there, and living to serve, which will be the days of service we will participate when we're there also.
On the first day, we will leave school and stop in Princeton, Illinois. On the second day, dairy and pig tour at farm, or bear oak farms, and then we will drive to Indianapolis, check into the convention, and attend the Laney Wilson concert or World's
That's the farm.
That's the farm.
So, day three will be Thursday, November second. It'll be the opening session, and the second session, we will have our national chapter award that we will receive. Then we will attend some workshops and go to the Expo Center, and we will go to Career and College Fair. It is actually the largest career fair and college expo in the country, and then we will tour downtown Indy.
That was a picture of us last year. Days four and five, uh, day four is days of service, which is, uh, living to serve, community service, and teamwork, and it is session six. We will tour Indianapolis to be, or tour in Indianapolis to be determined. Day five, we will make our way home.
While we are there, we will see some keynote speakers. The first one you see right here, he is the founder of the One Hundred Day Playbook. He guides students to forge better habits and enhance productivity and optimize their lives.
What's his last name?
I'm trying to avoid that.
You did a nice job. You did a nice job. I would have been the same.
Ben, Dana?
Yeah, I guess.
Who takes names?
Yeah, yeah.
And the.
And Dania, yeah.
Uh, another keynote, keynote speaker will be Cory Flornar. In nineteen forty-four, Cory etched his name in FFA history as our organize, organizations' first urban and African-American national president. Currently, Cory is the executive in residence for equity, diver, equity, diversity, and incon, inclusion, to help us advance our EDI strategy initiatives and efforts at national, state, and chapter level.
Is there any questions from any of you? Okay, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, since there were no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve which?
Right.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the national, or the FFA trip to national convention in Indianapolis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. With the stipulation that you give a presentation to the board when you get back. I think you guys normally do that anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item B, second reading of board policies with changes.
Um, a couple that I wanted to highlight, I mean, you could highlight everyone because there, there are changes in there. One was six oh one point oh one. Kyle pointed this out to me, there is an error. No, we are not looking to only have a hundred and eighty hours of school each year. That is, that is a typo, and we'd be in trouble. It should read a thousand eighty. It did read correctly last month, but with the number of policies, I didn't, um, trying to explain this technically, we, we didn't have all the updates, so it was handwritten in, and this month in pulling in the updates from. Simply that just was a simple error. So, it is intended, it did read correctly last month, but it would read one thousand eighty hours as required by law and not a hundred and eighty. Some other ones to point out, that I wanted to point out in there, two thirteen point E one, that has to do with speaking at board meetings, um, and the form they fill out on there, it says provided a podium. We don't provide the, the podium, so that we would take that out, and that's really the only change. Um, there are some other recommendations that you could look at through IASB about, um, having, not allowing people to speak or putting a cap on the number of speakers. We are not looking at doing that. We think that's important, so we left that recommendation at three minutes and didn't put cap on the number of speakers. The change would have just been where it says, um, I don't remember how it's worded on the sheet, but something about providing at the, at the podium, so it wouldn't say that anymore. Five oh three oh seven is the, labeled the student disclosure of gender identity. This is the one that has caught a lot of attention at the state level and in the news about places and not providing that, so this is a policy to meet that. Not that I'm worried that we've had that issue, but we're required to have that policy, so that is the one in there if you get asked that question. Not that you remember that number, but you'll at least know that we've talked about that. And then eight oh four oh five is the policy that would deal specifically with Narcan. So, you remember, in the spring, we've had presentations on that from Ashley. So, we are using the one that she got through her nurses', um, group and some other members that is worded that way and is more specific to our needs, but it would deal with us having a stock supply of Narcan based on her recommendation, and then she would be the one to keep track of that. And as a reminder, Narcan, it's a non-addictive, but you give that in cases where you think someone overdosed or OD'd on opioids, and you needed to do that immediately before a, um, EMS personnel arrived. Those are the ones I wanted to highlight. There's others in there.
And I am assuming we need a motion to approve the second reading with these changes?
Correct. And I believe when you make the motion, you have to read, read the heading as it's stated
I move to approve the second reading of board policy with changes. Review one oh four, one oh four point R one, two one three, two one three E one, four oh two point oh two, four oh two point oh five, four oh eight point oh one, five oh three point oh seven, five oh three point oh seventy-one, five oh three point oh seventy-two, five oh five point oh four, five oh five point oh five, five oh seven point oh two, five oh seven point oh two E one, five oh seven point oh two E two, six oh, six oh one point oh one, six oh three point oh five, six oh five point oh one, six oh five point oh one R one, six oh five point oh two, six oh five point oh three, six oh five point oh three R one, six oh five point oh three E five, six oh five point oh five, six oh five point oh seven R one, six oh seven point oh two, six oh seven point oh two R one, eight oh four point oh five, eight oh four point oh five E one.
And then the following are ones that were recommended, but we would say no to. So, you got to continue reading.
Okay, so we don't need to say them?
No, go ahead and.
Say no, and we're saying no to five oh seven point oh two E three, five oh seven point oh two E four, eight oh four point oh five E one.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of board policies as Greg stated. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Moving to item C, consider approval of changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar.
Um, I don't have anything to add that we didn't already discuss at the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the changes I represented earlier on the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four school calendar.
Right.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, seconded to approve the changes discussed earlier, the one change to the school calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of change to teacher work rules.
Um, in visiting with the finance committee, we went over this. One additional change we made, just when, for lack of a better word, there's some teacher over, overload, whatever you want to call that, and, um, how that would be compensated and what situation that applies to. The other one that I want to point out is from everyone that I talked to, no one knows when this would, was last changed, so I don't know how long ago this was in place, but when we are short steps, when we are short substitute teachers, which we've talked about happens from time to time, and we have to ask a teacher to use their prep to cover for that, um, they get paid fifteen bucks, and I don't know how long that's been in place, so we would propose changing that to thirty.
Any questions? If not, would there be a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the change, the teacher work rule.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the changes presented to the teacher work rules. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried. Consider approval of twenty-three, twenty-four LAU plan.
Thanks, guys. Um, the LAU plan is a plan for EL students and program that has to be approved annually. The updated plan is attached. If you're wondering what it stands for, it doesn't stand for anything. It's the court case that required the plan to be put in place.
Make a motion to approve the plan as.
Make a motion to approve the plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2324 LAU plan as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Consider approval of 2324 dropout prevention and at-risk plan.
Um, this pro- this program plan for our at-risk department has to be approved annually. Really, the changes to this was we are now in the second year of going in-house for our credit recovery for those students that have failed a class twice. And then with a ma- with Imagine Learning, we do that in-house. That's gone well. We talked about that last year. And then there were some type of graphical errors in updating names. There weren't other big changes to the program.
Make a motion to approve the dropout prevention and at-risk plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2324 dropout prevention and at-risk plan as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Discuss 2324 superintendent goals.
So based on our work session that we had back at the start of August, um, the August board meeting and discussions we've had, I tried to summarize that and put that into in here for you. Um, and summarizing that, and then I included some documents which we've discussed, but I'll explain here shortly. So to summarize the three goals, progress towards strength strengthening district literacy and math scores. And I like this goal. The more that I've looked at it, I kind of feel guilty about it because you've heard how much work those guys are doing towards that. So um, I'm really appreciative of them that, you know, I have a goal and they're they're so on board with that and they've worked, done a lot of work already with that. So I'm really excited about that. Um, the second one is work on improving staff retention and engagement and then keeping continuing to work on keeping Sibley sheet financially stable and viable. The documents that we would use along with that, if you would approve that tonight, would be the IASB superintendent evaluation form, um, the long version here. And then it addresses the 10 um, professional administrator standards and you'd use that. There's other guides we can use to fill this out, but this makes it pretty simple. And um, IASB likes that as a form to follow through with. Um, and there's more stuff in description in the back here. As you can see, I didn't fill this out, but you could you would fill out this annually to discuss the superintendent goals. What I did to make that simpler is in consultation with Luanne, I took that part out and filled that right in here, um, specific to what we have talked about. So those goals that I just said, I put in that form right here. So the first goal, progress towards strengthening district literacy and math scores. Um, some things are harder categorized than others, but tried to pick out what would best align with that. So looking at the 10 standards, probably standards three, four, six, seven, and eight. Um, and then you can see with the second one, the retention engagements, one, two, six, and seven. And then the third one we talked about, I thought maybe fit in eight, nine, 10. So one way or the other, it looks like actually with those three goals, we're probably hitting all 10 standards and so forth. And then the third doc that I think will provide us some clarity this year is something IASB responded. It's just one page. And we've talked about that would be good for us to do check-ins and and talk about how we're doing, um, or how not we I am progressing with that throughout the year. And so this is a mid-year, um, during the year, and doesn't have to be a middle of the year, any point, check-ins. And it just gives a quick summary of what those 10 standards are on the side. And then it just guides kind of some of the quick conversations. And then if you would approve that, we could use that whenever we wish, really.
Now, is there a way, or I know some superintendents do this, and this is just a suggestion, that when you present something at a board meeting, that it's highlighted, this would correspond with this goal for me, or this would go, because then as board members, and I won't have to do this, but for the three of you, you can go back through the minutes of the meeting and you can, there are your comments that you can use as to how our superintendent has done in, you know, supporting these goals that we've made for him. Because sometimes that's always a challenge when you go to figure out that evaluation is thinking and remembering if they're down in the minutes, then you only have to go through 12, 12 sets of minutes, or jot it down, or if there's another area that you can take a look at, it would just be, make things a little bit easier.
So as an example, I could go back here to like on when I do the superintendent report, some of that and talking through and maybe rather than framing it around the goals, but when I present some of the stuff, talk how that fits into one of the goals.
Correct.
Um, so as an example, certified enrollment projection, I think that, and looking into that and the work with that, I know that's just a one-line statement, but I think that would fit really well right into the third goal, keeping Sibley achieving financially.
Specific example to.
Right, that we've been looking at. Um, the second one, what we've been focusing on, and I say we, these guys have put a lot of time in and obviously leading it, but then they take the charge there, would fit into the first one, right? Um, and even the third one, the school safety grant, and that money would fit into the third one financially viable and um, I suppose maybe even a little bit with staff reta- in terms of safety.
Yep.
And so forth. So, you know, I could tailor some of the things in the reports along those lines if that's what we want to look like.
Yep. Sounds good. Any other comments or questions? Now, this just says discuss superintendent goals. You mentioned something about approving them.
You would approve them tonight, yes. We're having the discussion on them. And if you feel that they um are worthwhile or that you um, approve of them, then we'd vote to approve them.
Okay. So if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve those three goals.
I'll make a motion to approve the three superintendent three goals as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the 2324 superintendent goals um, and supporting documents as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Item H, appoint IASB assembly delegate.
So I I I admit I don't have a lot of background with this, and I know that this has been done in years past. So I put this on here so that if we were going to have one, it was at least an agenda item, because I looked into it, because if you have a delegate, you have to approve of it at a board meeting. And if we don't have one, then we don't have one. But that's why I put this on here.
If anyone is interested in how IASB works, this is an excellent opportunity. I've done it probably four or five years um, in my 17 years. And for the most part, now they've got it down to, it goes pretty quickly. Um, the last two or three years, they haven't been things that have been very con- controversial. Um, they provide you with an app, you vote on everything through an app, where before you used to have to hold up your um, voting credentials. Um, so it runs pretty good, but if you are at all interested, I would highly encourage it. Um, not every school is represented in in our district each year. Um, out of the 30-some schools, I would say we'd have maybe 15 to 20 that are represented, so.
And one of the things you discuss at that one is approving the priorities for priorities, excuse me, for some of those legislative priorities that we approved in July, right?
Yep. So if anybody's even remotely interested, if you want to ask me afterwards about anything in particular, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I could. So is anybody interested in being a delegate? Like I said, you'd have to go down probably the night before because that meeting starts, I believe, right around nine o'clock. So it would be awfully early in the morning to get up and go down. If not, we can move on to the next item, or you can think about it. All right, I will move on to item I, consider approval of additional modified allowable growth for special education deficit. And I think Kendra highlighted that earlier tonight. Any other questions?
This has to be done annually and not until you have your car done and all of that stuff and so forth. And then Kendra determines that, and then we get the um, spending authority back for that.
And if I remember correctly, in your motion, please read it as it states in the recommendation.
Do you read the amount then?
Yeah, read the.
Recommendation part at the bottom.
Oh, I was, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the additional modified low allowable growth for special education deficit and supplemental aid for the negative special education balance of 116,150 dollars and nine cents for the 2023, 2024 school year.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the additional modified allowable growth for special education deficit as Jamie stated. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Item J, consider approval of new contracts.
So we had approved previously the position of 504 coordinator, and we had someone in charge of that making block, should be working with um, primarily Mr. Hertz on that. Um, we did not have anyone from the outside or additional staff in being in interested, excuse me, in the streaming coordinator position. And um, since that's going to happen and that was an approved position from last spring, I told Mr. Beavers, you need to put your name in if you're doing the work. So that's where that's from. And then Kylie Herrera, what Mr. DeZao Camp was referring to earlier of why we're only one short now is because of right here.
I move to approve the contracts as listed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contracts as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Item K, consider approval of open enrollment requests.
Um, basically, the top two are students who are requesting to enroll in CAM Academy. One student for a private family reason. The other, even though they're in our district, really haven't attended here for two years for a variety of reasons. And then the third one is a family attending Spear Lake.
I'll make a motion to approve the open enrollment request as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment requests as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Item L, consider approval of instructional support levy resolution and set public hearing date and time.
If you're thinking you read this already recently, you did. So that approved, I apologize. That that was approved, it went through fine. Um, what we found out is the resolution we approved, we went through the public hearing, had the second reading, went through, was approved, everything was good, but it didn't include one or two sentences, Kendra, I don't remember, it's either one or two sentences on one of the points that um, as to support the instructional support levy, have the income surtax. That line was not written in. So are we good moving forward for the instructional support levy? We are, but then it we it would not include the income surtax, and then that would ultimately affect property tax rates because you wouldn't have the income surtax rate, um, income surtax to support that levy. So in order for that to be a part of that, we have to do this over. So my apologies on that.
Someone has to read it again. Just.
So the attachment.
Oh, not the attachment.
One and a half pages there, yes.
To consider continued participation.
Yes. Kendra will record the fill-in blanks, but you would start, whoever's going to read it, to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
Make a motion to consider continued participation in the instructional support program, whereas the Board of Directors has approved a financial plan which anticipates the level of funding. That will be possible to continue the current level of services and to fund the ongoing programs of the school district. And whereas the Board of Directors wishes to consider continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa Code Sections 257.18 through 257.27. And whereas the resolution sets forth the proposal of the Board of Directors, including the method that will be used to fund the program. And whereas notice of the time and place of a public hearing must be published. Now therefore it is resolved, the Board of Directors wishes to consider the continued participation in the instructional support program as provided in Iowa Code Sections 257.18 through 257.27 for a period of five years commencing the fiscal year ending June 202025. The additional funding for the instructional support program for a budget year shall be determined annually and shall not exceed 10% of the total regular program district cost for the budget year and monies received under Iowa Code Section 257.14 as a budget adjustment for the budget year. Monies received by the district for the instructional support may be used for any general fund purpose. Instructional support program funds may not be used to supplant funds used to fund dropout or dropout prevention programs, talented and gifted programs, physical plant and equipment levy purposes, or to cover any deficiencies in funding of special education instructional services resulting from the application of the Special Education Waiting Plan under Section 256B.9. The instructional support program shall be funded by instructional support state aid and a combination instructional support property tax levied annually upon the taxable property within the school district commencing with the levy of property taxes for collection in the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025, and instructional support income surtax imposed annually. The percent of income surtax to be determined by the Board for each budget year to be imposed upon the state individual income tax of each individual income taxpayer resident in the school district on December 31, 2024, and each year thereafter. The Secretary is authorized and directed to give notice of a public hearing to be held on the high in the high school library of the school district, um, Sibley, Iowa, on October 16, 2023 at 5:30 o'clock PM. Following the public hearing, the Board intends to take action on their question whether to consider continued participation in the instructional support program.
Second.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and seconded to approve the instructional support levy resolution and set the public hearing date and time. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Moving to item eight, additional items. Uh, the next meetings are listed there. Um, get back to Mr. DeZao on the IASB convention. And moving on to talking points.
Got a question real quick. So on the consent agenda, there was two items of you just you can pass through those then, or how does it, there's one just approval for resignations, okay. I just want to double check.
Yeah, those.
Part of the consent agenda, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We can ask and talk about it during if someone had a question, but then it's it's passed as a part of that.
Okay.
And I'm going to try to, for sure, the open enrollments, if they're coming in. If there is a reason to deny it, then I would put that as in the discussion or we'd vote. But if there's if there's not to, then we'll put it in there. Um, I've been intentionally, if it's out, we could put it in the consent agenda. Many do, but I thought it's at least worth discussing separately.
Okay.
Any talking points from the meeting?
Barbara Williamson's presentation on special ed program and all the hats that she wears. I know she works really hard for our district and just, it was good to hear just how hard they are working um, to help our kids who need the extra help. And I know they do a tremendous job, so I really appreciated her presentation.
Yeah, I've said it before and I'll say it again. It's the favorite, my favorite part of the meeting because we get to hear what's going on in the in the classroom and what our teachers are doing. So the information on um, in the consent agenda items with the looking forward to the budget, there's some decisions that are going to need to be made within the next four or five years to um, not that we haven't been doing that in the past, but it's good to have that. not that we haven't been doing that in the past, but it's good to have that information. Anything else?
Great presentation from the FFA leaders, and that they can have the opportunity to attend when you look at all the cool things that they're going to take part in. I think that's really a great experience for.
And we're getting another award.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Another on the list of many we've received, and hopefully will receive in the future. Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I'm moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carried, we are adjourned, thank you very much.